Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Move that over a little bit. Okay, we will move to public participation. There's one person signed up, correct, Joe?
Yes, Janice Persico was signed up.
Janice, are you here? Hi, welcome. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me? Janice Persico, 31 Rodeo Drive. And I'm here because I wanted to actually follow up with something Mr. Cobza spoke about at the June Board Event Meeting. Right before the vote on the transgender policy, he mentioned there was talk of creating more gender-neutral restrooms and locker rooms at the schools. And I'd like to know where that stands and if there's any concrete plans to move forward with that. My transgender student has swimming this year for the first time, hasn't had it because of the pandemic. And to be honest, I'm a little nervous about what that's going to look like. I would think I would be more at peace if we had gender-neutral locker rooms or changing areas for those students. And these types of discussions about gender-neutral spaces was something that I had hoped we would have been able to discuss last school year when we were debating the transgender policy. There were no debates about it. There was not a lot of talk about it for the 10 months of last school year. And those of us who spoke for it and against it, including our own students, deserved for there to be conversations and discussions and compromises on that policy. And I feel like it's a shame that that did not happen. I would have loved to have conversations about creating gender-neutral restrooms and locker rooms so that that would ease the fears on both sides of the argument. I think we need to do that. So I am here because I want to see if there are concrete plans to move forward with that. And I do know that there haven't been any major building projects since 2017, so I would like to know if this is something that we can do. I know you're going to be talking about the budget again very soon. That happens quickly. I would love to see something in there to, some money in there to make changes to our buildings, especially starting at Massey. In the last year that I was talking about the transgender policy, so many parents and students come to me. We have a huge population of transgender and non-conforming students at our school, especially at Massey. And I think we need to create safe, comfortable spaces for them to use the restroom and to change for gym. So I'd just like to know if we can have updates on that, or maybe we can talk. I would love to help with anything I can regarding that as well. And that is all. Thank you for listening to me at all your meetings. I appreciate it.
Janice, do you have the superintendent's email?
I am sure I can find it very easily.
And if I may speak on behalf of the board here, we do want to make sure that all students, there are, what's the term I'm looking for, accommodations made? So we are interested in that and making sure that students feel comfortable with that. So that continue, that conversation will continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Hearing none, we shall move on to report of the chairman. Joe, I'm going to pass it to you for introduction of student board representatives.
All right, I'm going to pass it to Lisa Peterson. Unfortunately, Steve Swenson couldn't be with us tonight, so Lisa's here to reintroduce us to last year's board reps and introduce our new board reps this year.
Hi, Lisa, how are you?
We have four now?
Yes, they're gaining on us.
But it's usually, we have four and it's usually two and two come at each time. We have two seniors, two juniors.
I'm just having flashbacks to when I first joined the board and my son, my son was on the board before I was. He was a student rep before I was on the board of it. So I'm looking at your faces. I'm like.
There's your future.
Your moms are now going to be on. No, I'm just kidding.
So thank you to all four of our students for taking on this responsibility. Our two senior representatives are returning from last year, so you know them, Aiden Silvestro and Ellie Oliar. And we have two new representatives from the junior class. Ellie DeGeorge, who is president of the junior class, a two-sport athlete in field hockey and lacrosse. A member of the journalism program, the French Club, Interact, and the Medical Club. So welcome, Ellie. And Eric Unger, who is the treasurer of the junior class. He is involved in the wingman program and a member of FBLA and DECA. He won the Unified Sports Leadership Award last year and is a member of our outdoor track team.
Thank you. Welcome.
You guys have good mentors in Allison and Aiden, for sure.
Absolutely. Do you have a report for tonight? Okay, take it away. Yes, thank you. Hold that thought. We're going to, because that's under report of the chairman, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does board members have any questions on the minutes from last month? Anyone? No? How about warrants? Any questions for Ron on the warrant? No? We're going to go to notification of retirements. Joe?
Yeah, we had two teachers who have already put in for retirement for the end of this year, June, effective June 2023. Big congratulations and thanks to them. I'm sure we'll have plenty of opportunities to continue to celebrate them during the year. But both Laura Chadwick and Lisa Roman, who I believe both started their careers out at Chalk Hill School, are now teachers at, have been at Jackie Hollow, probably close to its inception. So we wish both of them the best of luck. And I'll hold off on the new hire announcement because we're going to meet a bunch of them in a few minutes.
Want to weigh down that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions on retirements or notifications of new hire appointment? You want to talk about the appointment or do that with that too, Joe?
I'll let, because we're going to have all the principals introduce the new hires.
Okay.
Koby Benedict is one of them amongst 20-plus that are here tonight.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dennis, seconded by Jerry. Thank you very much. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. We will move on to the reports of the committees. And now we'll start with our brand-new student board reps. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board of Education members.
We hope you're all having a marvelous Monday. The school year is off to a great start. Students have been adjusting to schedules, classes, and everyone is eager to participate in Massey traditions and events. All class student governments have released a Spirit Week schedule for the week of October 17th to 21st. Monday is Safari Day, Tuesday is Barbecue Dads versus Soccer Moms, Wednesday is Color Wars, Thursday is Theme Day, Friday is Massey Spirit Day. And the Class of 2023 Student Government has planned a homecoming dance for Saturday, October 22nd. And the yearly bonfire will be held on Tuesday of Spirit Week.
Fall sports have kicked off with a bang. As I'm sure most of you already know or saw for yourself, the football team won against Notre Dame 38 to 0 with great offense and defense and amazing halftime and sideline entertainment. More good news in sports, both girls' and boys' soccer and girls' volleyball won against their opponents 3-0 in great games. Field hockey is on fire with a record of 4-1 following their win against Newtown and girls' swim and dive was also victorious at their first home meet. Girls' cross-country already had their senior night this past week and have been doing really well along with boys' cross-country and boys' golf.
Robotics is off to a strong start. There are many new teams this year and currently everybody is in the midst of building. We're looking forward to yet another successful year for robotics. The play this year is Oliver and auditions will be held soon and we're excited to see how the production goes.
Good evening. The Peer Leadership Club will be sponsoring a Massey movie night to be held on September 29th of this year. The movie show will be Mamma Mia, a comedy, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. This movie night has been sponsored by the Admin Project, meaning alcohol and drug awareness in Monroe. Popcorn will be available for sale and all Massey students are invited to attend. The movie will be shown at the Massey softball fields. Additionally, progress reports will be released on 9/21/22 for all Massey students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Anyone? Shannon?
Also, hopefully the students know that they're welcome to stay, but they can leave after.
Yeah. They're already beaten feet.
Hopefully they know that. The Policy Committee met tonight and will have some policies to bring forth at the next meeting for first review.
Sheila, you get those to Joe. We'll get them on the agenda. Thank you. Any other committees? No? Alrighty. Thank you very much. We shall move on to the report of the superintendent. Joe?
Once again, I'm abdicating all my responsibilities tonight. We have a, we were really excited. This year was, you know, something I haven't seen in a long, long time with the, you know, the number of retirees that we had plus addition of new staff members. We think we welcomed 27 new certified staff members this year. It was a really large stu, new teacher orientation at the beginning of the year. Rather than me talk about them, I asked each of the principals if they would just quickly come up and just, so you can make, put a name to a face with all of our new hires and what their positions are throughout the, throughout the district. So I can see Kelly in the back, so, sorry, Kelly, I'll start with elementary and we'll start at Monroeal and work our way up. And if, and if the new teachers, when Kelly introduces you with your role, you can forego your speech for tonight, but, but if you could just stand and wave so everybody can see you.
Hi, everyone. I would like to introduce Monica Reyes. She is a second grade teacher. And Bree Coyle, our school psychologist. And Katie Muniz was not able to make, I don't think, tonight. She is our art teacher for pre-K through second grade. And that's it for Monroeal.
Thanks, Ash.
Hi, everybody. So I have eight out of our 27 new hires that I'm going to be announcing, which is very exciting. So as I say your name, please stand up. In kindergarten, we have Jennifer Messina. That was with us last year and came back as our kindergarten teacher. Emily Smith in grade one. Ashley Gilby, also in grade one. Sherry Milnich in grade two. She was also with us last year and came back, came back this year as a classroom teacher. Heather Murray joins us in special education. Elizabeth Santangelo joins us in special education. Melanie Viera is our part-time EL teacher.
Part-time with, I understand 27 EL students.
I was just going to say, part-time, but she's working hard and doing a great job. And then we have our newest hire that does not actually start until next week, but we asked her to join us tonight, a music teacher, Carrie Celestri, who is a familiar face to town and she'll be introduced soon to the board and officially appointed, but thanks for joining us. So those are my eight new hires.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Lisa.
So we have seven new staff members at Fawn Hollow. In kindergarten, Catherine Severson. In first grade, Tiffany Locanti. And also in first grade, Catherine Lindley. In fifth grade, Katie Wazner. It was the season of Kates at Monroel.
And the need of first grade teachers, too.
Yeah, yes. In the special education department, Vivian Sikorsky. And also we have a part-time PE teacher. He's not able to be here tonight, Eric Holden. And a part-time music teacher, Jeremy Lang. He is also not able to be here tonight. And I think that's everyone. Okay.
Thanks. Thank you.
Welcome.
Julia?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Julie.
We were so lucky at Jackie Hollow School this summer with some great hires. I'd like to introduce to you Mark Bilata, our new band teacher, who will be sharing with grade five bands. Our new strings teacher at main campus and also teaching music and technology. And he'll be also teaching fifth grade strings at Monroeal, James Betancourt. In the special education department, and she's leading the Lions Pride Alternative Setting Program, Nicole Wyble. And our new social worker, who's actually K8. She'll be home-based at Jackie Hollow, but then also traveling from there to help at the elementary schools, Crystal Aldoff. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Once again, Lisa.
Massey is welcoming five new certified staff members this year. Koby Benedict in math.
Former Massey grad.
Derek Flynn in science.
Awesome.
Former Massey grad.
Come on, you can't leave that out.
Kyle McGinnis in special education at Massey and at staff. I think Kyle could be here tonight. Emily Wasnick in social studies. And Daniel Young, also in social studies.
Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I think that's everybody.
Welcome and best of luck.
I just want to say Sheila and Mike did a great job onboarding the new teachers with a really good orientation with the help of a lot of other staff in the district. But I think one thing that has kind of come through time and again from new teacher orientations to just, you know, the whole onboarding process, the interview processes. We seem to have a really talented group of folks here. I think we're lucky to have them. And I hope you make this, as I tell every one of them, I hope you make this your last home.
And Joe, it's very impressive that we have Massey graduates coming back. We're very blessed. I think all of our positions were full, filled, so that's a testament to you and staff and to the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay. Have a good night. Okay, we're going to move right along to old business to which there is none.
We have the, the review of the fund.
Sorry, I'm jumping.
I'm just going to pick it up to Ron.
Number B. Sorry, Ron. Ron prefers that, just keep going.
Sorry, Jerry.
Well, that cleared the room.
It's a budget issue. All right, so before I get into the fund statement for the current fiscal year, the, I'll call it the final unaudited number for last year. Surplus of $931,000. So for the current fiscal year, again, it's early. We're still working, we're still allocating some grant money and moving stuff. We'll be moving stuff around with some budget transfers over the next month or so. One number I did want to point out, we're in the negative on page three. It's fuel for generators. We have, with the removal of the oil tank, in-ground oil tanks at both Massey and Jackie Hollow. The generator at, that we're spiking the fuel out separately as opposing to having it in heating fuel the way it was in the past. So that was an unbudgeted item, but it's the fuel that's in there right now will, unless there's an event, that'll carry us through the year. Because the, I think it, I think the generators just kick on once a.
Week for a test.
For a test, yeah. So that's pretty much it unless anyone has any specific questions.
Any questions for Ron? No? Good news on the surplus. Thank you. Okay, sorry about that. We will now move to old business to which there is none. We will move to new business and I'll go back to Joe on the teacher evaluation plan.
Sure, I'm going to ask Mike to come up. Similar to last year, the State Department kind of gave us the same parameters and flexibilities with the teacher evaluation plan. You know, that being said, I know the state is also in the process of, you know, reimagining their, their teacher evaluation plan, so to speak. So we'll see where that's going. But Mike's going to kind of walk us through, you know, what the parameters that the state gave us this year and the work that the professional development and teacher evaluation committee did this year. Mike, do you want me to?
Yeah.
I couldn't find the.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's fine.
I'll just hit it for you.
Thank you, everyone. As Joe said, last year, 2122, the State Department released these flexibilities for teacher evaluation, knowing that it was going to be a very different year because of the pandemic. At the end of last school year, the State Department decided to extend these flexibilities for another year, seeing that, you know, as a state, we're not all back to normal, still dealing with a lot of the effects of the pandemic. And because they are not the T-val guidelines that you all had previously approved years past, we have to go through the approval process again this year for the state. So what we did first off is we went to the PDT valve committee last week, went through these flexibilities again, got their approval. And now we have to come to you, answer any questions you may have about these flexibilities. But for those of you who were here last year, a lot of this is going to ring very similar to what you heard last year. Because they are the, Zach's saying pretty much flexibilities. All right, so we'll just go through. Like Joe said, the Department of Education is actually meeting on Thursday for the first time in two years about teacher evaluation. Because there was a plan a few years back to really revamp what teacher eval looked like. Pandemic hit. They didn't really work much on it, but I wouldn't be surprised if we start to see some changes to T-val in the next, you know, six to eight months. There are some legislative requirements to it, but there's a lot of talk at the state of looking at the way that we evaluate teachers in the state and making some changes. But for this year, this is what we're, they're giving us as far as the flexibilities. This is the language that the state provides for why they're making these recommendations and this justification. This is the exact same language that they released last year. They just changed the school year to 2223. So the guidelines are the same, looking for prioritizing the need to focus on social emotional learning and overall well-being of students. Equitable learning opportunities for all, responsive teaching and learning practices, academic achievement and engagement with families. So these are the flexibilities they put towards us. So you'll see we sort of take those and make them our own. And, you know, put focus where we want to put focus certainly as a school district. So there's going to be a bunch of percentages that will equal 100%. So 45% is the student learning indicators. It's the growth model. It's what have students achieved. With these flexibilities, the achievement is sort of a balanced approach to teaching and learning. So it's important as, and this is the language of the state, for educators to focus on supporting the wellness of the whole child, providing learning opportunities for all students and providing support to students who have challenges and attaining learning goals. Things we know happened during the pandemic where some students did not make the achievements that others did. So trying to meet all kids and get them, you know, further along. So to that end, and I apologize for all the information that's on this screen, so I'll just break this down into two different, the teachers and the administrators. So what there's, what the state says is they want teachers to develop one student learning goal with a minimum of two indicators. And the two indicators, one is on academic achievement and one is on social emotional learning and engagement. So having that, as a district, it's sometimes difficult to have one goal that encompasses both those things. So what our recommendation is that we have two goals. So we did last year, too. So we have one academic achievement goal that teachers focus on and one about SEL and engagement. You know, the idea that we have this sense of belonging in our school system, something we've been talking about a lot. We'll talk a little bit about our district, our district goals, about people being connected and belonging in our schools. And so that would be the other side of it. Administrators also have sort of a reflexive piece to that. We have two student learning indicators for administrators, and that's supporting students to achieve academic success. And the other bullets down there are really about that SEL engagement, meeting kids, giving them the support that they need to be successful in school. Another 40%, so we're up to 85% now. This is all about teacher observation. And the teacher observation requirements, ask the evaluators to really take a look at the classroom as a whole. How are teachers addressing all the needs of the kids, both academically, emotionally, you know, getting them connected with each other? You know, definitely a concern, and we talked about this here with what happened during the pandemic where they became a little bit more disconnected. You know, we're seeing, we're definitely seeing huge improvements with that. I mean, I think we see it every day as we walk through our schools, but we don't want to lose sight of how important that is. So if you look at what's required of teachers, if teachers have been with us for three or more years, so more than two years, and were rated proficient or exemplary last year, there's a minimum of two informal observations, which is about 15 to 20-minute observation and also a review of practice. And a review of practice, when the evaluator sits down with a teacher, they go over what they've done, you know, whether it was to connect with families or professional development. They could also be in a case, for special ed very much, it can also be a case where an evaluator, an evaluator will be in a PPT and will be able to watch how that teacher, you know, behaves, acts in a PPT and write that up also. For some of our newer teachers, so all those people that were sitting, they will have a minimum of one formal observation, which requires them to do a pre and post-conference. It's a full 40, 45-minute lesson with a lesson plan that they go over with their evaluator and that minimum of two informals and the one review of practice also. These are all minimums. So we can go in, evaluators can go in as much as we need to, or as much as we feel is going to be best for the teachers. But this is a minimum that teachers will have. As for administrators, it's very similar. We have a minimum of two site visits and one artifact review with our evaluator. If they have been working for three or more years in the district. And some of our new administrators are going to have three site visits. And, you know, so the evaluator will maybe go to a department meeting and watch a department meeting and write that up and, or do rounds with them and see what they talk about when they do, you know, educational rounds. So that's that 40%. And then on this, this is, this sort of shows what the other 15 is. So we have the outcomes rating on the left-hand side for 50% and the practice rating on the other side, 50%. So for teachers, we have that 45%, which is student growth and development. And the other 5% is like a whole school learning goal. So there's a goal that's set for the entire school and really what happens is you average what everybody's holistic score in the school is and we all sort of share in that score. That's 5%. It's not a huge, but it does have that piece of, we're all in this together, the sense of community. On the other 10% for the other side of practice and ratings, so there's 40% for observations. The other 10% is parent feedback, stakeholder feedback. If you know that we are state mandated every year to do a climate survey for the community, that we invite all families to take part in. Our goals are usually based on something there. Like we look at something that we want to work on and we look to make that improvement. And so that's what that other 10% is for that. Same for the administrators. They have that same sort of 50/50 rating on that. So at the end of the year, you can, they combine all this, so the scores go in and you can get one of four different ratings, the exemplary, proficient, developing, or below standard. And we have, you know, end of the year meetings. There's mid-year meetings to talk about where they are. And so that's, and that's the stuff that gets reported. These are the two goals. I think Joe sent these to you in a weekend review back in August. At the admin retreat every year, we come up with our district goals. And I think the district goals really relate to what we were just talking about. You know, the district goal, that we're going to foster growth in the competencies of the vision of the graduate as we go into all that work, very academic, but also has that balance of student well-being, ensuring high expectations for every student every day. And that stakeholder feedback goal, really focusing on this culture of belonging and connection for all students and families. You know, last year and the year before, we spoke so much about this influx of new families to Monroe. And we know that when they're connected with the school, those kids are going to achieve more and it's going to be better for the entire community. So, you know, that stakeholder feedback goal really speaks to a lot of that work we've been doing.
Just, just.
How are you going to measure the stakeholder feedback goal?
Well, the, like, the climate survey has questions in it about how welcome they feel in a school, how much the communication works with the school. We look at where we were last year and where we have the improvement to this year. So that's what we've done in the past. There's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about that. Like, I feel welcome in my child's school. I get enough communication. I feel like my teacher, the kid's teachers care about my students. There's a lot of questions about engagement and connection.
Parent surveys?
Excuse me?
You're going to do the parent surveys?
Yeah, the parent and family surveys. It goes every year that gets.
With that in mind, is there a percentage minimum that you accept response-wise? If you're surveying the parents and you send it out to however many parents, is there a minimum threshold that you have?
Well, you know, we.
Check validity, you know?
Well, as much as we possibly can. You know what I mean? Like, we send it out, we send out reminders. I remember I did that a few times as principal last year, like, hey, it's still open. It's open for two, you know, it's open for two more weeks. Can we force people to sit there and take the survey? No, but we, we do the best we can to get the information that we need.
A decent response.
We do get a decent response.
I have to look back and see what, what the response.
We survey parents and students and staff.
Do the questions change every year? I can't remember.
Some of them have to stay the same. Some of them are the same.
Some of them will change, you know, based on things that are happening.
I really don't, I mean, I do it every year. I just can't.
We used to have a lot of technology questions, if you remember, when it first started, we had all these technology questions about the culture of the school. That sort of dropped off because we didn't need them. And then I think we added some more in the last couple of years just about, you know, feeling connected and the communication, because that was such a huge push for us.
Do you come up with the questions yourselves or do you have a company?
We have, we have taken some questions from a company that we used years ago, with certain questions that are mandated by the state. And then we'll tailor some that, we're like, hey, this EL, this might be an issue. What's nice about having the students, the staff and the families take the, the surveys is sometimes, we try to ask the same question to all three. And be like, it seems like it's a big problem for the students, but parents and staff don't see it or vice versa or something like that. You know, kind of opens up, you know, especially at the high school, starts conversations with the kids around, around something. Or you might see, you know, parents perceive something as, you know, an issue that their kids may not.
We know social emotional took a hit. COVID really racked everybody. But, you know, the other thing that took a hit, and I don't know whether it's feasible to target administrative goals, but reading and math, but just taking a.
Well, that, you know.
Academic achievement piece.
The first piece is, the first bullet is academic achievement.
That was a 45%.
It said you can have one. Do you have, you can do both as targeted objectives?
We do both.
We're doing both.
We do both. And, you know, that's really, the administrator's goals always sort of reflect what the teacher's goals are. Because. reflect what the teacher's goals are, because we're gonna support
Should be the other way, teachers' goals reflect what the administrator wants, right? Isn't that, isn't that what you said before, Joe?
So, you know, the idea of like The idea of what is our role as administrators is to support what teachers need to do in the classroom. So, let's, you know, support that. And we know we need that balance. And that's that balance that we need to make sure we don't lose sight of, like you just said, the reading and the, and the math goals. And that's, that's huge.
Huge, thanks.
Anyone else? Or there's more? Sorry.
No, just that we have that, now at this point, we have to, right? This is the point of news? Absolutely. So, yeah, like I said, PDT Val Committee did approve these. And then, depending upon whether they get approved from the Board of Ed, then we'll send them off to the state to say, this is the, we're gonna accept the flexibilities, and we're gonna go forward with this for this year.
Mike, our biggest investment is staff, right? So, does this evaluation program really identify staff that needs help in certain areas to grow and develop them? Because obviously, that's our investment, right? We want to retain staff and grow and develop them as much as we can, PD and all that. So, does this also help in that endeavor?
I, I think so, because in days of yore, it was really focused on one area. And this really focuses on everything that happens in the classroom. And it allows us to really sort of address all different aspects of the classroom, and it allows the evaluators, we have some leeway to really, you know, work with teachers and say, hey, I'm gonna come in and I'm gonna see, see, because we have this opportunity to come to classes as often as possible, you know, say, hey, I want to come in and see this next week, let me help you with that. Like, and the way that these goals are written, Dave, it's, it requires them to put some, you know, I'm gonna see this amount of improvement in kids, whether it's on a star test, or, you know, any other district sort of designed assessment. And also with the SEL, like, how am I engaging my kids? How many kids do I have coming to pause sessions or flex sessions? And how am I getting those kids to engage with me there? And is it improving their academic achievement? So, we spent some time at the admin retreat, actually talking about sort of what you're saying, where it's like, how can we best use our evaluation process to really improve student achievement, improve, you know, teacher performance and in effect, student achievement. I think this plan works for that very well, if we take advantage of all the different aspects of it. And I think it's there for it.
Yep, so the teachers can challenge themselves as well?
For sure, absolutely.
Dennis, go ahead.
Yeah, kind of spinning off your point and playing off the fact that, right now, we're the third most attractive school system in the, in the state, according to surveys, right, for our teachers. And we had a robust group of new teachers, which is fantastic. It's only 5% for the team goals. Is there any way we can change that to make it more team interactive?
That's a statue.
That's a statue.
That's a statue.
That's a statue.
Mike, why, why only one formal evaluation? Is there, is there a need to have more than one?
That's a minimum. So, the formal evaluation is a pretty, it's pretty extreme, I mean, in the way that it, there's a lot of steps to it. And most of our new teachers are coming out of schools right now, where they do something called the TDAP.
EDTPA.
EDTPA. And it is like this sort of huge best portfolio that sort of hits a lot of these pieces also. Because the evaluation has so many different levels as far as goals go and such, I think part of it, especially during this, because I think before this, it was too formal, it was too formals before these flexibilities, and I bet they're gonna go back to more of them. I think they're just feeling like, there's been a lot on teachers, you know what I mean, a lot of new teachers, I think they're trying to look at team, like first-year team and second-year team, which is the new teacher. They have to go through all these modules and do these papers and such, to add so much, it's, it's almost untenable.
Sheila and Mike, you guys are more familiar with NINE, but just, when you hear formal observation, informal observation, the formal observation is really, you know, it's pretty in-depth. It's not just the, it's just not going and sitting in on the class. There's paperwork that the teacher has to fill out, aligning every, all of her, his or her lesson plans to, you know, Connecticut Core Standards. There's then a pre, a pre-observation meeting with the administrator and the teacher. Then there's the, then there's the actual formal observation, which generally tends to be, you know, probably, we were talking about informals, being 15 to 20 minutes, these are probably more like 30 to 45 minutes in length. Then there's the write-up by the administrator, and then there's the post-observation conference with the teacher, you know, hopefully within a day or so after that. So, they're very
Written reflection from the teacher, too, about the lesson.
Thank you.
So, they're reflecting on it. And so, it's, the formal, and it's a minimum, a one formal.
I think that's the point. You said it's a minimum. So, if you see a need, you'll evaluate them more.
Is there, is the process the same regardless of tenure, for example? Or is this just for newer teachers? Do we evaluate all years, all teachers?
We evaluate all years. But if you're past the second year, right now with these, you know, flexibilities, it's two informals and a review of practice.
Okay, so there's no formal for somebody past the two-year mark? They're all informal?
Right now, no.
Right now.
But there used to be, like, we were on a cycle before of a three-year cycle, where you'd have your year, where you'd have your formals and your informals. This is prior to these flexibilities. So.
Jerry, go ahead.
Hey, Mike, go over what happens when there's, I know what happens, but for us, what happens if there's a concern with a veteran? So, you have a tenured teacher, and you see a concern. Could you go through that with the board, the steps?
Certainly. If there's a concern that we see, you know, we'll, the evaluator will meet with the teacher, we'll talk about what the concern is, we'll say, this is what we see. Because it's really from a, it's always from a support. We always look at it from a support angle. Well, how can we get you to that place that we need you to be? And so, there's a lot of support with that. So, usually what it is, is this is what I saw, this is my concern, this is what I need you to do for me to, I want to come in and I want to see this. And it might be over a course of, I'm gonna come in a couple times, and I want to see this improved. I want to see it, and depending upon what it is, if it was a classroom management thing, we'd say, hey, let's work together with some professional development. I want you to go see this teacher and how they design, you know, their class, their, their, you know, their morning routines, let's say, so you can maybe reflect upon that and, and change what you're doing. And then, you're gonna say, I'm gonna come in in a week, and I'm gonna see what we got, you know, and then move on from there. And it's a process, you know what I mean? And it wouldn't be a one-and-done, depending upon what the concern is. You know what I mean? If it's a grand concern, it's gonna be, you know, it could go as far as putting somebody on a plan, you know, getting involved with you.
That's what, I want you to keep, yeah.
Listen, if there's a concern that is that deep, it will go to, it will definitely go to plan. If the concern's saying, I'm concerned with what I saw here, let's talk through what I just saw, and let's talk about what I can do to support you, to improve upon that practice. And, you know, get the instructional leaders involved, the coordinators, us involved, and the principals to like, it's a team effort. It's sort of like what you were saying. We have really good teachers, and sometimes they, you know, if something goes down, we want to make sure that we can keep them and retain them, and make them better.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the reality is, we would love for every single teacher, employee, regardless of what industry you're in, to be a high performer. But the reality is, that's not the case, right? So, you put a pool of people together, you're gonna have folks that are high performers, you're gonna have the middle, and then you're gonna have underperformers. And it's, once you get tenured, what are the steps to hold them accountable and/or move to replace?
It's the same steps that we just kind of went through. I mean, you know, there is a, I'll say this, and we spend a lot of time, especially with our, our new teachers, and if there's issues, you know, we do have the, you know, sectorally, we have a lot more freedom to, to move someone along, you know, as opposed to when they are tenured. But being tenured doesn't absolve you of, of everything.
Joe, if I could
Please.
Tell me if I'm incorrect, but I, I think it's also a lot of work on the administrator's part, like, a lot of, doing a lot of observations, like, oh, I went in your classroom, you're supposed to be teaching this, and I didn't, I didn't see it being taught, then you come back, you know, you're still not teaching that. It's, it's a lot of
That's what I was trying to get to.
It's just a ton of observations, and it's a lot of work. But if a teacher's tenured and they're not performing, you can't, absolutely. I've seen it happen.
I've seen it, too. That's what I was trying to get to, Mike, was
Right. We would put them on what we call structured support, and we would bring the union in and sit down with the person and say, look, you know, we've been in and out of your classroom, we've worked with you, we've said, this is what we want to see, we're not quite seeing that. So, now we're bringing the union, and we're going to have this conversation and, and talk it through with the union to come up with some other suggestions on how we can support that teacher. And then, like Mike said, we're gonna do this now, and we're gonna come see this in a period of time. We're gonna ask you to go and observe other people, and then we're gonna come back around to you. And if we're not seeing the gains in, in what's happening, then we're gonna have a different conversation.
Yep, got it.
And, you know, I know Sue and Ralph are newer in their positions, but I know Sue, you know, we've had those difficult conversations with staff, and I will, I will credit them, you know. I think everybody wants good teachers in front of kids, and they're very supportive of, you know, giving support. And, you know, Kim Marshall has a great line, you gotta help people out or help them out?
Help them out, yep.
I think it's a great plan. I think, you know, the social emotional aspects, we know, have hit the kids hard, but you've also hurt, hit the teachers hard.
Yeah.
Do we have a good sense of what the tenor is right now? How, how's everybody feeling?
I think people are feeling better, I mean, just
I would say this year has been, felt, I should ask. I just think that the, you know, the vibe this year has been, you know, much more positive. I think, you know, I think it started with the first day of school, and the kids coming in, and you can see them, you can smile, and the interaction and stuff like that. It's just so much more, so much more positive. The, the teacher, am I characterizing the teachers okay?
I don't know if we speak, yeah. I mean, it's definitely a noticeable change from, from the last couple of years. I mean, like you said, from, from day one, just the fact that the kids came in day one wanting to do like schoolwork was a big change than I saw over the last couple of years.
I just think teacher stress levels are a little bit lower. They're still high, but they're not last year high, so it's coming down.
I wouldn't undermine it, because I saw some incredible things from different principals, you know, how they treated the staff and did things outside the norm, to kind of keep everybody working as a team and socially chilled, if you will. So, I think, you know, it's kudos to the system, administrators and principals, nice job keeping everybody sedated to a point.
I also want to include you both, a question for you both, just talking specifically about this evaluation plan. Any comments from your, your side at all on this before we vote on it?
I mean, he sat in, he sat in on the meetings, and we're comfortable with the plan, and he's fair for teachers.
And it's, I know we were working on it today as, as a math department, we do discuss it together, and we're trying to meet it as a team. You know, and, and the SEL part is that hard part, how do you measure it? And that's something that, you know, we're gonna work on throughout the course of the year, and figure out how we're gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
What we're gonna do together as a team, that's how we've always done it.
And we appreciate that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mike? No? Okay, thank you. Mike? Then, I'm gonna read right off of our agenda. May I have a motion for the following? The Monroe Board of Education confirms mutual agreement with the Monroe Public School District's PDTEVAL Committee for the Connecticut State Department of Education's 2022-2023 Teacher Evaluation Flexibilities with anticipated approval from the CSDE. Motion by Christine, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? None. All those in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. Any other comments before we?
Before we adjourn, Katie, is that you? I thought so. So, it's Katie Nunez, who is our new part-time art teacher at Monroe Elementary. You missed the gang of folks that were here before, but I didn't, I did not want you to make the trip for no reason. So, I'm happy you're here.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yes, there was one more thing before adjournment. I just wanted to say what a great job Joe did, and thank you on the Expect Better podcast. And if you haven't seen it, you can go to YouTube and search the Expect Better podcast, where Joe sat down with Gaetano and talked about the Monroe School District, even part of what Mike was saying with kids feeling included. They talked about that, they talked about school safety, COVID, challenges as a superintendent, number one reason people moved to Monroe is for the school system. But it was just, I think it was a great communication with the community, Joe, on your, on your part. And you felt, I watched it, I felt like I was sitting in the room with you guys having a cup of coffee, like, and just learning, you know, stuff about the district. It was great. So, so thank you for doing that. It was excellent.
Thank you. And a shout-out to Gaetano Amara for, for offering that. It was a great way for us to, you know, kind of, another way for us to broadcast, broadcast all the good things that are happening here. So, it was awesome. Thank you.
It was really great.
Mr. Stevens?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion seconded by anyone? Dennis? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.